Okay, moving on to, again, to receive this proposal amended.
So move with the idea that we move 10E up under eight?
I think it's 10C.
Was it C?
Look.
What was it?
Is it 10C?
Let's see.
Yeah, 10C, sorry.
We're gonna move that up because we have a few people here today and that way they won't have to sit through the whole meeting if they don't want to, so we'll move that up sooner than later.
And item five A should read Barb Prather, not Barb Grant.
Yeah, I saw that.
I had Operation Threshold on my mind. It should have been Food Bank on my mind.
Okay, then. Do we have a second on the agenda?
Second.
Y'all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Public comments, is there anybody who'd like to speak to the board this time? It's not a agenda item. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Pat Morsey and I live at 824 West Third Street in Waterloo. And I know I'm here for another issue here later on, which you moved up, but the things, there's a couple of things I just wanted to tell you about. First of all, I want to thank you as the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors and the Blackhawk County Conservation Board for what's happened with Wolf Creek Bridge. What started over years ago with the closing of the bridge in 2015 and had led to all sorts of controversy about what was gonna happen, but with your $77,000 that you first put in for that project getting started, I know there was some concern about other entities, namely bicyclists or recreation enthusiasts using that trail, well, and wondering what our buy-in was gonna be on that. And what I want you to know, to this date, our net that we have raised is now over $95,000. So, but it couldn't have got started without the support from the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, so thank you very much. Secondly, the last weekend, the friends of Gilbertville Depot had their seasonal opening. They had an event on May 18th from one to four called Rails to Trails. Mark Ackelson, who was instrumental in the initial trails conversion back in the eighties, was there and their Dick DeWater had prepared a pictorial of big blow-up pictures of what had happened around that time with the controversy of changing that over to the recreational trail, which, as Mike Henderson and I think other people referred to it, as a 52-mile linear park. So I just wanted to pass that on to you. And then finally, I just want to let you know that this Friday, the Cedar Valley Bike Collective is having their fourth annual Bike to Friday Lou event, and I hope that all you supervisors will get on your bicycle and you will ride your bike into Lincoln Park to Friday Lou and park your bicycle into the Cedar Valley Bike Collective's Bike Valet. And if you do, you can register and we've collected close to $2,100 in prizes, so we'll have prize packages that will be awarded, and I don't think it's a conflict of interest for you to enter into that, so please show up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else this time? Okay, then, moving on to payments, Resolution A.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Grant Vitor County Auditor sitting in for the departed Finance Director. The claims for the county are a total of $2,701,802.71. This includes $2,337,781 to Butler County for the Social Services Regional Fiscal Agent. That's a biannual charge. And as you know, Butler County does the County Social Services Fiscal Agent duties. Those claims appear to be in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item four, receiving project updates from Department of Zandua or elected officials.
So, good morning, Chair, Board.
Good morning.
Good to be back before ya. Let's see if we can get this started. I didn't know everyone came to see me today. I'm Yolando, I'm the Executive Director of Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. Proud to be a veteran as we prepare ourselves for Memorial Day. And that picture right there, I'm a sailor and the Sullivan Brothers are unique to me and near and dear. And so, as we get prepared, let me see if I can bring this up real quick.
You click on open folder.
Open folders. Hey, you guys are, hey, that's a way to help each other out. All right. So as this comes up, our elected official, thank you for what you do, and so I'll be quick, because I know I'm just in the way. Directors update, I just wanted to have an opportunity every now and then to come and transparency is key. And so, we here at the Veterans Affairs don't want any hidden secrets, so we just want to come before you every now and then, every quarter or so, to just tell you how well we're doing and what we're doing for the great city of Waterloo. I just wanted to throw that out there because some of you guys are Marine Corps and I just really want you guys to emulate the Navy, because I represent the Navy in that standpoint. But that was something we did way back in 1988, where we were coming back from deployment and we just wanted to thank America for their support as we went on that combat mission. Couple of things that I wanted to show you is, May events, some of this has already passed, but I just want to kind of amplify just a couple of things. You know, Mr. Jamie Allen, if it wasn't for our volunteers, I don't know where we would be. She went out to Walmart and collected over $400, and what she did was intern those into gift cards so that when veterans come in and they need some assistance, whether it's food, whether it's shelter, we can give them those gift cards and help them relieve while they're going through their certain situations. A couple of other things that went on, the Honor Flight, what a great thing that was to be there when those guys came back home and shake their hands. So, Mr. White, thank you for what you do and everyone that does those Honor Flights. I know there's one leaving today in Cedar Falls. A couple of things that I wanted to pull out of here, we did kick off our first luncheon in Lincoln Park last Thursday, success, about 65 veterans total showed up. We're looking to improve that as the weather gets better. It was actually sunny, it didn't rain on us like we're probably planning for this Thursday, but we enjoyed it and I'm glad we were able to kick that off. We've had a guy out there singing some patriotic songs, and so we look forward to that volunteer to come back out and sing those songs. Couple of other big things that are coming up, as you know, this Friday, we'll be out planting flags and Garden of Memories, and you never do anything, always do things directly, and so Yolando will be right out there with the volunteers. Again, thanks volunteers for coming out. Garden of Memories, they say, have over 4,000 veterans laid to rest there, so that's near and dear to all of us, and so we're gonna be out there supporting that. And then, on the 27th, my Waterloo Memorial Day Parade, standing before you, I guess they're gonna let Yolando to be in the car, to be like the chairperson for the parade. I didn't elect myself, but I'm gonna take part in that and be, and look forward to the great things that we're doing in that standpoint. I just wanted to give you a couple of things. So service area veterans, this is what we're really looking for, and if you could look at that graph, our Vietnam veterans, we got about 8,000 veterans in the Blackhawk County area. And from month to month to month, January, you can see that we served pretty much over 85 Vietnam veterans. We took a dip when Kevin left and then we're starting to spike back up. Our Vietnam veterans is our main production that come into our office. But the other two that we're constantly looking at, is taking emphasis on, is our Gulf War veterans. Our Gulf War veterans are about 30 years since Gulf War I, '91, spent about 30 years. Those guys are gonna start trickling in, those 8,000 veterans, we're gonna start seeing an uptick in our Gulf War I. And if you don't know, post 9/11, that's 20 years. So those guys are gonna start coming. So we're tracking our young veterans as we do our old. And so, and then we have our peacetime, the in-between veterans. And so I just want to kind of show you where we're at, and we're on an uptick back now that the weather's getting a little bit warmer. And then our month-to-month, or what we call our four-month window, it tells you what we're seeing. Again, in this standpoint here, what we're talking about is how many veterans are coming into our office per month. And you can see it was over 200 in January, then we took the dip in February, starting to make that slow climb. The other thing about February, we had some snow days and some bad weather, so there was a lot of days that we didn't, wasn't productive. But as you can see, March and April, we're back on the way up. And a couple of other unique things that we're looking at is the new veterans. Are we capturing, are we getting new veterans into our office? So that's one of the big things that we're looking for, recognizing the veterans that are in our county, and are we getting them to the office so that we can, they can apply for benefits that they're eligible for? And then another one we're tracking is relief. We're, there's a steady number of, say, what I call veterans coming in for relief, but we're handling those. But case to case, wish I could do something for the guys that sit out there in Walmart with those signs and say, hey, they're a veteran, and then we go out there and we find out they're not a veteran. Wish we could do something about that. But for all the ones that do and they're in that kind of destitute issue, if they would come to us, we would help them. We would shelter them, we would give them food for our food pantry, and we'd go out of our way to make sure that they're, have a roof over their head. Couple of other things, thanks to the community involvement, great donations coming in from January to today. We got a couple of grants for our ramps, and we've done three ramps so far this year, and also for our PTSD, we provide gym memberships, about $300 a pop for our service members who have PTSD to keep their minds going. We're getting prepped up for our stand-down, our food pantry, and then our general funds. A couple of things I just wanted to touch on, and I'm only gonna beep before you real shortly, is where should we be by 2024 going forward? And so I kind of put that out there, it's Yolando's vision of where, Kevin's already got it at a plateau, and really, we just want to maintain what Kevin's already built, but we can broaden our horizons. And so, there's a couple of things. One of them is, we would like to see if we could be certified as a video conference center for vets when they come in and talk about mental health. So if they want to talk to their primary care provider, and he's in Iowa City, he can come in our vets' community center, go into a locker room, be able to video and talk to their primary care provider. Just another avenue without going out to the outpatient clinic. Couple of other things, having quarterly stakeholder meetings, bringing anyone that is dealing with veterans, John Deere's got a big veterans organization out there, all the post commanders, JROTC, ROTC, UNI, Hawkeye. Another thing we should look at doing is the quarterly meetings and the quarterly recognition of all of our staff and our volunteers. We do a lot of work, but I don't think we applaud them for it, in particular our volunteers. So I just want to get that out there and looking at doing that during our commissioner meetings, just recognizing all the great volunteers that do great work for our veterans. A couple of other things is the visibility and state and national organizations getting out there, getting involved. Blackhawk County is the fourth-largest county in the state of Iowa, and so we should be involved with the state in things, and so I want to see us get involved in that. Open dialogue with the commissioners, board supervisors, and city councils, this is one way, is just showing you a little picture, a snapshot of what we do to improve the diversity within the county, want to grab more diversity, get more people involved, and show them what we're doing and what we bring. Another thing is to get down there and get more bricks down at the Iowa Memorial, the Waterloo Memorial. If we can get more people to participate, get more veterans to know about the bricks, we can improve the appearance of the Waterloo Memorial. So that's a big one that I'm taking. Couple of other things, you guys have seen this, I briefed this already, this is that current snapshot of what we're going to, but Yolando's here to talk about, and this is an ugly, ugly picture, but I want to see if I can tone it down just a little bit. But this is the picture of the Pinehurst, Pinehurst Building, but it's where the childcare was. And the reason why I bring that up, because we've already had the area that you guys have already designated that we're gonna do some remodeling of. But with the new addition of the childcare center, there's some great areas that we can utilize, like we do our picnics in a park at Lincoln, but we can actually bring that back closer to home. And so we don't have to lose an hour or two of production, taking food out to the parks, we could do it right there. They give us a little bit more square footage in doing things that we want to do in particular. And so I've been in discussion with the great doctor over there at our Health Department, and you want to stand up, Doc? So we've been in, we've been in discussion, and did you want to say anything about?
So, we've been in discussion, should it come, I don't know if it works. Thank you. We've been discussing any, any kind of planning, I think it's a team effort, right? So Yolando and I, we met because the Health Department has needs, and we actually did a walkthrough of our, both of our units to see what would be number one feasible and ideal for both organizations. We will have a meeting to discuss some of that planning with Rory, but Yolando has expressed that the Grinn and Grove would be ideal because, one, I think from even my perspective, the rooms are large, and then we talked about the outside being that picnic area, which eventually I think even for all the staff that are out there could even utilize. I think for us more, it's from the clinical perspective, we do need some time to look at the rooms that the VA currently have, how ideal it'll be in terms of the clinical aspect, but also the water system. So the kitchen is an area that they would need to utilize, and we were thinking about it from a laboratory stand, where would our labs be, and we need access to bathrooms as well, so, but I think it's in the planning, and we will come up with a plan so that we can present to the Board of Supervisors in regards to both areas and how they'd be feasible and ideal. Anything else?
And one of the things we wanted to bring up was our Vietnam vets, you've seen the numbers that we bring in, our Vietnam vets are 70-plus, and so we're looking at the handicap access into the building, it's a straight shot right into the building. Currently, our veterans have to walk through the Pinehurst Building and they're out of breath by the time they get to our office. So just something to keep in mind, and I just wanted to bring it up to the Board to propose that we shift from our space to the Grinn and Grove space to help facilitate our veterans going forth into 2020. And that's it, I'm standing by for questions.
In regards to your lunch you had last week, that was done by the girls that helped with the Honor Flights, right?
Sure was, and so they really represent it and we acknowledge that, so thank you for that. They were the first ones to step up.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Good information. Okay, is there anybody else? Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Just very briefly, a couple of updates. Our murky road paving project is going while the road is closed, we are halfway through that paving process right now. Completion may be as early as two weeks from now. Tuesday after Memorial Day, the Raymond Road overpass, so this is the overpass with Highway 20, that will be closed. We do have our, we will be placing our electric, electronic message boards out there on both sides of the overpass later this week to warn people that it will be a full closure for probably six to eight weeks. We do have a D2R in place. We will be removing all the concrete and then replacing that with asphalt. Our maintenance crews, our truck drivers, our motor grader operators are working 10-hour days now this week, weather permitting, hauling rock, getting it graded, trying to get the gravel roads in better condition. And then lastly, concerning the Grundy Road Improvement Project, the public meeting is tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM. We have rescheduled it, or moved it to the Dyke Community Hall, and we have informed the pastor of the church out there, as well as we also have our electronic message boards are out there at both ends of the project. So I understand you will, most of you will be making it, so we look forward to that meeting. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Morning.
I told you via email that I would try and make a personal appearance to keep you updated on the RFP project for the, or the process for the public safety software system. The project is moving well ahead and our work with Delta Works, the consultant that we paid for, out of the leftover funds from the radio project, what a fantastic expenditure of funds, because they are fantastic consultants. We've worked on projects like this with other consultants, but these folks are top-notch. They're out of California and they've done a fantastic job for us. We ended up with three bids, all three companies were well-versed in what they do, but we've isolated on two companies and beginning the second week of July, or June, rather, they will start coming to Blackhawk County to get familiar with us and to start demonstrating what they can do. They will spend a week at a time with us and we will be evaluating their product. We are currently doing the background checks on their, on their references. Once they've presented their projects and their products to us and spent that week with us, then we will start traveling to their install locations and meeting with their customers and consumers to do that kind of due diligence. We have not looked at price yet, but the consultants have assured us that that not to exceed $3 million, we're well under, so there's no concern with regard to that, as I indicated via email. So any questions with regard to that project at this point? I'll try and keep you updated as we continue to move along, but it looks like we're right now fixated on two companies that can more than meet or exceed our expectations at this point, so we're very satisfied as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else? Mike?
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Mike Hendrickson, Director with County Conservation. With Memorial Day weekend right in front of us, just a quick update on the status of our park systems. Everyone knows winter and spring were very harsh on, on some of our park systems, but where we sit today with the weekend coming up and the kickoff to the recreational season, Hickory Hills Park, McFarland Park, and Big Woods Lake Campground are all running at 100%, and so they're, they're ready to go. The only issues we have, Siegel Cove Park with the rain over the weekend, Wapsa Pinacan is going to experience some pretty good flooding, and so we have closed that down, it will not be open for the weekend. Blackhawk Park has some issues right now, there's some water over the road, we expect that to be off the road by tomorrow, will open right back up again. That camp, the camping in Blackhawk Park is divided into two sections, Fog Doll Side and a Cedar Side. The Fog Doll Side is up and running, and if that water gets off the road, it will be open and ready for campers. The Cedar Side still has work to be done, so it will not be, but those are the only issues we have. Every reservable facility that we have in our system, those are campground sites that can be reservable, cabins, shelter buildings, and lodges, everything we have has been rented for the weekend. So the public is, is ready to go and it'll be a great kickoff to the season, so. Any questions?
Very good.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? Kim?
Oh.
Okay, then, moving on to presentation, we have a Red Nose Campaign presented by, says Barb Grant, but it's the other Barb.
Okay. I'm not, I mean, I can hurt problems, make your problems.
Thank you, and thank you, Chris, for inviting us. Thursday is Red Nose Day. You don't have to put it on, but can we do just a fake picture or something?
I think that's what we did last year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
You gotta tell us a little more about this, all right?
Yes, I will.
See, I'll pretend to. So you gotta put it on your nose, guys.
And hold it up, hold it up. That's all we're gonna do.
That's all we're gonna do. Thanks.
Thank you.
So Thursday, May 23rd is Red Nose Day, and the Red Nose Day campaign nationally, and their mission is to end childhood poverty by funding programs that help keep children safe, healthy, and educated. And through entertainment, they bring people together to laugh and to have fun, all while raising life-changing donations for the children that need it most. This is a national campaign, there's a big TV show on Thursday night, as well as, if you go into Walgreens, everything's Red Nose Day, but all of that money is raised and goes back to programs that help end childhood poverty in the community. And for the last three years, the Food Banks receive grant funding through this, through Feeding America, our national organization, to help fund our kids' programs throughout our service area. But right here in Blackhawk County, last year, we provided 63,000 backpacks of food to kids on weekends, they take them home from school, so they have food on weekends. We also provide over 1,200 children with food during, for the, during summer feeding, and our Kids Cafe program annually provides over 46,000 meals and snacks. The money that we get from Red Nose Day does go back to help these programs and help us fight childhood poverty by reducing food, helping to reduce food insecurity in the lives of kids in our community. In Blackhawk County, 16.7% of kids are food insecure, meaning they lack access to an adequate supply of food, and the programs that we reach out to into the community help ensure that they have access to an adequate supply of food. And I want to again thank the Board of Supervisors for the support they also give us every year to help provide food through our food pantry, that's providing about 2,400 families every month right here in Blackhawk County with food. So, thank you, go out and support Red Nose Day, because the money does, some of the money does come back here and help us in our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barb.
You want to keep your nose or?
You're grabbing the bag, I'm assuming you want.
You can always go buy another one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then, looks like we're moving on to item six, minutes approved from May 14, 2019.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We do have a couple of hearings that we'll get to, one's on the janitorial contract, and then also we have FY '19 budget amendment. Number eight is a consent agenda that will be made with a single resolution.
Second.
Any questions on the consent? Roll call, please.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, we moved up item 10C. This is a resolution to petition the Governor of Iowa and the State Legislature to address the factory farm and water crisis in Iowa, be approved.
I think everyone has a copy of the resolution. I sent out the initial one a couple of weeks ago, the only change I did, I took out one line that had, that said that we've seen a big increase in applications, that, that part wasn't particularly true for Blackhawk County, so I removed the rest, but the rest seemed pretty accurate and what our frustrations have been as we've gone through the master matrix.
Sure.
So I know there's a lot of other people that want to talk today, if anybody has any questions for me or else.
Maybe at the end.
Okay.
Hey, Board, anybody before we go to the audience, any Board members? Okay, then, so we'll take questions or comments right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay then, looks like we're moving on to Item 6, minutes approved from May 14, 2019.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We do have a couple of hearings that we'll get to, ones on the janitorial contract, and then also we have FY '19 budget amendment. Number eight is a consent agenda that will be made with a single resolution.
Second.
Any questions on the consent? Roll call, please.
Trail call.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwert.
Yes.
Little. Yes. Okay, we moved up Item 10C. This is a resolution to petition the Governor of Iowa and the state legislature to address the factory farm and water crisis in Iowa. Be approved.
I think everyone has a copy of the resolution. I sent out the initial one a couple of weeks ago. The only change I did, I took out one line that had, that said that we've seen a big increase in applications. That, that part wasn't particularly true for, for Blackhawk County, so I removed the rest, but the rest seemed pretty accurate, and what our frustrations have been as we've gone through the master matrix.
Sure.
So I know there's a lot of other people that want to talk today. If anybody has any questions for me, or else.
Maybe at the end.
Okay.
Hey, Board, anybody before we go to the audience, any Board members? Okay then, so we'll take questions or comments right now. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and we'll open it up for discussion.
I'll go first. Good morning, Supervisors. It's great to be with you today. I'm Eric Giddens, 1416 Madison Street, Cedar Falls. Also Program Manager at the Center for Energy and Environmental Education at UNI, and I'm your newly-elected State Senator for the western piece of, of Blackhawk County, covering Cedar Falls, Hudson, and a part of Waterloo as well. So anyway, it's good to be with you here today. I'm here to speak in favor of this, this resolution, both for my role as the Program Manager at Center for Energy and Environmental Education, also as a State Senator. I believe that the, the state needs to take action, and you sending this message to the state sends another, you know, supportive message to the state that, that action needs to be taken, and I'm here to, to do whatever I can at that level to help address the water quality issues that we're facing in the state, and this is a big, a big way that we can do that. So I just wanted to read a couple of things really quickly from a report that the Iowa Policy Project did. This was actually dated January 2018, but things haven't changed significantly since then. It's a great report entitled "The Explosion of CAFOs in Iowa and Its Impact on Water Quality and Public Health." I know you're well aware of these issues. You've had frustrations with the master matrix not being a strong enough tool to, to give you the local control that you need over this, but just to emphasize some of these things, Iowa has more than four times many large concentrated animal feeding operations called, commonly called CAFOs, as it did in 2001. Over the last decade, has added nearly 500 new or expanded state-permitted CAFOs annually. Now, an estimated 10,000 CAFOs of all sizes. Skip down, while water quality is a stated priority of Iowa lawmakers, livestock production is an important contributor to water degradation and goes unchecked essentially. Manure leaks and spills are associated with fish kills, nitrate and ammonia pollution, antibiotics, hormones, bacterial contamination, algae blooms, water quality impairments, closed beaches, and are a major contributor to the dead zone in the Gulf of Mexico. So, major problems that we, our state of Iowa are, are contributing to, not just here in Iowa, but across the country. Skip forward, there's some, in this report, serious issues with, with public health as well that I won't talk about. I'm here mostly to talk about the water quality and environmental impacts, but the report states, "To control and eventually diminish these negative impacts and sustain long-term farm animal production in Iowa, we suggest six policies for rural Iowans, supervisors, and legislators to consider." One of those six is to pass a moratorium on new CAFOs. So, the Iowa Policy Project is a very evidence, research-based organization that's nonpartisan, does wonderful policy work. We, we listen to them and, you know, advocate for policies that they advocate for, and I would, I would urge you to pass this resolution. I just wanted to add really quickly that I'm proud to live in a county that has, as its vision statement, which is printed on the front of your agenda, the, you know, vision elements in a rapidly changing future, one of the items that you strive to do is to achieve environmental sustainability. This, this is the way you do that, is to make your voice heard. Again, I commit that I will do all I can at the state level to, to address water quality, and I appreciate the, the work that you do, that each of you does, in protecting our environment here in Blackhawk County, and making your voice heard. So, thank you for the work that you do. Take care.
Thank you very much. How many, before we move on, how many people in the audience are in favor of this resolution? Raise your hand. Okay. Anybody against it? Okay, I just wanted the Board to see that. Is there anybody else that has some different information that the Senator didn't speak of? Would like to come up and speak?
I just want to, not really different, but I just want to say, I'm Jerry Hagman, 3052 San Salvador Drive in Waterloo, and thank you for everything you do. As a Vietnam veteran, our ship, as soon as it would cross under the Golden Gate Bridge, would often go on water hours, and you learn in a hurry how important water is. So even though we are lucky to have an aquifer in this town, that's, the water's super good, I still have distillers and filters at home just in case. But then also, when Mike was talking about the parks being full, it's no fun being around a lake that's, has signs up that say, "Stay out of the water," and I've seen that in different lakes, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Board, anybody? Okay, I think we had, did we discuss this last week before we, yeah, we did have a discussion last week on this, so.
I had a question, I guess. Just, I know you mentioned too, there were like 23 counties, I think it was, that was the last number that supported either in a letter or in some type of a resolution, not necessarily this type of, this exact resolution, but in something similar. And we also mentioned last week, I think it was a non-binding resolution, as far as what we'd expect of it. I do agree that it sends a message. My question was, I would like it to be something, and I know the binding part of it's probably where we could get caught up on it, but I said the, the moratorium obviously impacts others than just the factory farms. But I was wondering if we could do a, a letter or the resolution to the, the Governor and the state legislature, asking for them to, you know, look, take that look at the master matrix and the failings of it and that type of thing, without asking for a moratorium on CAFO. And that's really just my question, I guess, to the group, to you.
I wouldn't be comfortable amending it that way. I think, I think we need to have the moratorium in there, because the, the moratorium, it is, it calls for it until we reach fewer than 100 impaired bodies of water. I think 100 is still a pretty high number of impaired bodies of water in the state, but we are far from that right now. So I think it's, it's really a crisis situation, and I think if we're going to go ahead of it, we need to put the brakes on now until we've got better things in place. And like it says, I think that the goal of getting to 100 impaired bodies of water before the moratorium would be lifted is, is I think reasonable.
Do we have any idea what, what time or resources would be needed to get to that 100 impaired?
Um, there's, there's, there's a lot of, you know, involves everything from all these watershed management plans we've been working on, and there's, I think we're still a number of years away from there, and we're, we certainly don't have the political will right now in the state to get it done, and that's, that's why we need a strong message, message to them.
Go ahead, no.
And I think this would be a good message to send for the state. I, I knew nothing about this issue until Chris brought it forward, and I researched it, and I was disturbed at what I discovered. I think it's an issue that basically snuck up on the state. I don't have any plans on becoming a vegetarian because of what I discovered, but.
It's part of the resolution.
I support this resolution. Again, I think it's one of those issues that snuck up on the state, and hopefully the state is going to address it effectively.
Right.
Do we have any idea how many more counties will be supporting it? Obviously, the 23 is in the minority, so it would be great to.
I mean, I, I, I'm sure that, that activists have plans on going to every, all 99 counties. And so when you look at the counties that have supported, it's been counties of all different political stripes, and so it's really a, it really is a bipartisan message I think we're trying to send.
I think it's a good resolution. I support it.
Yeah, the message that we've kind of gotten from the state legislature lately is kind of less local control and home rule, so.
Right.
We certainly need a voice in the master matrix.
Okay, is there anybody else?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second. Okay, any other questions, comments? Roll call, please. White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwert.
Yes.
Trail call.
Yes.
Little. Yes. Okay, motion did pass. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we'll start.
Nobody more passionate than the groups here today, I'll tell you, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay then, moving on to Item 9 is.
Somebody's first.
We got a first.
Somebody's first.
See, Renata, Renata, is that your first?
Oh, my God. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, Item 9 is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution memorandum agreement between the state of Iowa Judicial Branch and Dunkerton High School, which allowed the use of Dunkerton High School to conduct court proceedings for Blackhawk County in the event that disaster occurs at Blackhawk County Courthouse, and for the Blackhawk County Sheriff to provide security. This originally came down last week, and it had, I believe, just the Board of, or Chair on the Board of Supervisors, and it was added the sheriff, because obviously it pertains to the sheriff, and I'm assuming he saw that already, the agreement, so. Anyway, it's basically something that the state wanted to have in case of first.
Second.
Is there any other questions? Tony, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, roll call, please. Layland.
Yes.
Schwert.
Yes.
Trail call.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little. Yes. Moving on to Item B, this is a resolution, lowest reasonable bid received from Cleveland Crane and Shovel. This is a bid opening May 14, 2019, at 9:07. This is for the purchase of AD-10 lattice moving crawler. These funds will come out of the FY '20 budget, and the bid was $375,000. Kathy, anything you want to add?
Yeah, as you know, as you know, we did open bids in the, here in the Boardroom last week. We did receive the one bid, and this was after we did send out specifications to approximately five companies. Most of them were here in Iowa, but we did have a, a few outside the area. I would recommend that we be allowed to purchase this. It is from our FY '20 funds. We will, by taking this action today, we'll be able to notify Cleveland Crane that we would like to purchase it. We'll give them a letter of intent and a purchase order, but we cannot pay for it until July 1st.
Is this, was this over budget? I can't remember.
So we budgeted $400,000 for this item.
And this is a Manitowoc crane?
Yes, it's a Manitowoc, 80-ton crawler crane.
You had mentioned previously, I know about it, actually allowing you to do some of the work you do more safely than.
Right, so what we have today is, we do have, the county does own two cranes. We have a 1968 crawler crane that has been refurbished, but, and we have another 50-year-old crane that, that's rubber tired. We, we would like to, to surplus the, the crawler crane. This will allow us to keep building the, the, the small bridges that our county crew personnel build, and it's essential that we have a crane to be able to do this. We need to drive pile with the crane, and this would allow us to continue to do that. It allows us to pick up the beams that we fabricate at Longfellow and set them out, out on site.
So you're keeping two or one?
So once we purchase this, this new used crane, we'll have three cranes. We would like to get rid of one crane this summer, and we would like to keep the rubber tired crane probably for a few more years. That's handy when we have large culverts to set. We can just drive the crane out there, and it allows us to pick up large culverts. It allows us to be used for setting guard rail, for example.
How much will it be used, on average, do you think, a year?
So, I, I can't tell you how many hours it gets used. Probably less than 100 hours. They're not heavily utilized pieces of equipment.
Would it be cheaper to get rid of it and rent one for that period of time?
So, I think eventually we will look at that for both of our cranes, existing cranes, because they do cost money to have inspected every year, and we can't get parts for either one of them anymore, so I think that's just, that will eventually happen. They will.
Let's check into that, maybe let the Board know.
Sure.
Okay, is there anybody else?
I, I appreciate your work finding a, a used crane that has low enough hours that makes sense. Just for the public's knowledge, how much does a new crane start at?
So, I can't give you an exact cost, but we priced it at over $1 million for a similar new product.
I'll move on the resolution.
Second.
Okay, is there any other questions, comments? Roll call, please. Schwert.
Yes.
Trail call.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Item C, is a resolution, lowest reasonable bid received from Ryan's Electrical Services. This is for work to be done at the Gilbertville Maintenance Shop, and again, this is FY '20 money with a bid of $43,427. Kathy, anything?
Yeah, so these next two items are, are a result of us being the, the prime contractor for the replacement for the Gilbertville Maintenance Facility. As you know, we already opened bids and selected a, the building contractor. They'll be erecting the steel building, pouring the concrete flooring. We broke it out into, to two other contracts then, an electrical contract and a mechanical contract. These next two items cover those. We send out our architect's specifications that they put together, and we did receive, in this case, we received five bids for the electrical services. The low bid was, was an incomplete bid, so we threw that out, and we were going with the second low bid. We did budget $80,000 for the electrical portion of this work. So I would recommend that you accept this bid, and we be allowed to move to contract with Ryan's Electrical Service.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Trail call.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwert.
Yes.
Little. Yes. Okay, moving on to Item D, this is a resolution, lowest reasonable bid received from Hudson Hardware. This is for mechanical plumbing systems, and again, this will be at the Gilbertville Maintenance Shop, and then again, also be FY '20 money, $57,354.44.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, any other questions?
Always budgeted on that, Kathy.
So the, the electrical, excuse me, the, the mechanical work was budgeted at $50,000.
Okay, any other questions? How'd you arrive at these budgeted numbers, anyway?
We worked with our architect, and we did some homework by talking to several different mechanical and electrical contractors. As we were, earlier this year, in late last fall, as we were working through the process to, during budget time, to come up with a budget number. Why we thought we could do this cheaper, we, we spoke to several different electrical and mechanical vendors. They gave us some really good numbers, which have, we reasoned then we could do it cheaper, and that's how we came up with the budget numbers, and except for this bid, they've been, they've both been under what we.
Yeah, but I was curious on the last one, it was almost, we budgeted double for when it actually came in, so. Okay then, any other questions on this resolution? Roll call, please. White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwert.
Yes.
Trail call.
Yes.
Little. Yes. Okay, Item 10, Other Businesses, is a motion to authorize Drake County Auditors at the date of a hearing at 9:05, June 11th, Order Room 201, and this will be for possible transfers from the general basic fund to the capital improvements fund and technology equipment fund.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item B is a motion to request for first, purchase of capital equipment submitted by Carn Dow County Social Services. We approve and direct the Chair to sign for its purchase, new office equipment, $12,256.12. Carn, did you want to add anything, or?
I don't have anything to add here.
Okay, we did see the memo that you sent.
Second.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item D, this is a motion that the revision to the insurance policy to include language about compliance with ACA, setting employees' premiums, changing life insurance benefit from $10,000 to $15,000, and including a correction. Second D, and A, D, and D stands for dismemberment, not disability, and recommended by Policy Review Committee. Deb, you want to say anything on this, or does the Board at first have any questions? and recommended by Policy Review Committee. Deb, you want to say anything on this, or does the board at first have any questions?
Okay, this is just a, basically a cleanup, and then the main thing was to change the life insurance to fifty.
That actually came out of the, in union agreements, July first, and we have a policy that covered it from that point on, so. Okay, then.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item E is a motion to the revision to the paid time off policy to allow non-bargaining employees and the PTO accrual plan to access, access their medical leave hours for an approved FMLA illness right away instead of having to use two days of short term. You want to explain this one? Deb?
That'd be like our HR director. So this, this group of people were the only people that were required to use the PTO. The short-term PTO is like the equivalent of vacation or casual time. Anybody else could use their sick time first if it's a sick event.
So this puts everybody, basically, on the even keel.
This basically levels the playing field. Gives them the same benefits as people on the traditional plans.
Board, any questions on that?
I think you should check with, what's Paul's name? Yeah. We, we just redid our handbook for CSS employees, and I don't think that matches up with what, what the law says.
Right, I think they, I think they took ours out of the current policy that we have. But, you know, if you guys want to update yours to match this, we just did this because I think with CSS, they, this will be their only policy. But here at Blackout County, we have the traditional accruals along with the PTO, so.
It's just an awareness, and Carn, that we want to make sure. Okay, is there anybody else? Do you have motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item F is a motion to the revision to the holiday policy to change birthday holiday to a floating holiday be approved. And Deb, what's that mean?
Again, this is consistent with what we did first, FY twenty for all the bargaining contracts. Every single one was moved to this type of a.
So this puts everybody, again, on the same page.
That was kind of a, one of our goals in bargaining this year was to try to get things more consistent between the units.
Motion to approve? Second.
Any questions for this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item G is discuss, discussion possible board action setting a process of criteria for outside funding request.
I put this on the agenda. I was tasked with this by my fellow board members. During the budget process, I noticed that we provided funding for several worthy programs, the Food Bank, Operation Threshold, the U and I Local Food Program, Legal Aid, Met, Soil and Water. I just wanted to come up with a process. I researched this, what other counties were doing, and the funding opportunities they provided. And I wanted to get a page on our website, something simple, straightforward. I provided it to, to the Board of Supervisors. One page that explains what this funding is for, yet our ability to maintain fiscal responsibility. I, for one, support continuing our support of these initiatives. I know there are different philosophies across the board. But I know when I, when I was elected, I approached each and every board member. I said, listen, whatever, we may disagree on issues, but when this board makes a decision as a, a board, even if I don't agree with that, I'm going to support the board. I thought this was a worthy process to bring forward, and I just wanted to bring it back, have the board discuss it, and see where the board would like to go. We did have an application process in the past, but I don't think there was much information, information on our webpage, what was available, because some of the nonprofits I talked to didn't know when the deadlines were, how they submitted, what they, what they needed to do. This gives them a little guidance. And the application process is fairly simple. It's basically one, two pages. And then, once we receive that, if we decide to continue this process or program, we as a board can make a decision whether we feel this program or project is worthy or not. So I brought it forward to get feedback from the rest of my board members and see how you would like to proceed.
Are you looking for action, or just maybe, as people kind of look over this and so forth, let you know?
That's, that's up to the board. I mean, it would be appropriate for either or, table it, and, and have, and I'll solicit feedback from my fellow board members and bring it back in the future for a definitive answer.
The, the one thing for clarity, a lot of people don't realize is the previous program was under solid waste monies, which was a rebate from solid waste. And the board at that time decided to, to do the program with the various agencies, nonprofits that way. The money was cut in half, so obviously the funding dropped down. This obviously will have to be determined out of taxpayers on what happened. And, and to be honest with you, it's kind of year to year, you know, where we're at, because we don't know today where our budget's going to be in FY twenty-one, so. And also, I noticed, and I don't know if I saw it in here, the other one, it was stated it wasn't for any wages for any of these nonprofits, and it could be in here. I didn't see it.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure I saw it either.
No, that is, on one page, that's prepared? No.
And some of the, the nonprofits that you brought up, some of them, we never, ever really discussed before because they weren't, quote, the, a couple of them you brought up are agencies that actually do work for Blackout County, Met, the Soil Conservation. It, it's a little different than the, like the Food Bank and the other ones, and they never really participated in that, Legal Aid and so forth, so. What's the pleasure? You guys want to wait and kind of look over it? Those are a couple of suggestions I have, and you can get with Dan, and have plenty of time, obviously, before budget, and maybe tweak it a little bit and send it back to you. Did we get this electronically?
Uh, yes.
Could you resend that to everybody?
Absolutely.
I think this is a really good start, and this seems pretty similar to the process I've gone through for applying for grants from other places. I would think maybe, and it's a really small thing, like when we, the overview of your organization, how funding will be used, it's pretty common to have like a word limit on that stuff, like, and I don't know, like a, a five hundred or a thousand words or something, just so that people are, are trained to be concise with what they're doing and stuff, and it makes it easier for us to sort it through, but. And then I wonder if, instead of this being a form that they could download, whether the whole form could just be online, too. And then there's no need to worry about who it's getting emailed to, because those things change over time, as, as it's changed now.
When you mentioned it wasn't on the website, it's because we didn't have that use of the website earlier for it at the time we were doing it, so that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, yes.
Just a second.
Yeah, you're IT director. One of the things that we can do is an online form, and then it would actually limit the number of characters. The other thing we can do is set up an alert so that these organizations can send us, you know, their email sign up. And then when you trigger that, it would send an email to tell them that it's time to sign up, so we can, we can do all those things now with the current website.
But I think it would be helpful, like to post those dates and that type of thing, too, so people can take a glance at it.
All honesty, really, they know when the time is. I mean, you don't have to tell them. They know. And they sign up, and usually in the past, even though they got money last year, if they didn't sign up, then usually they weren't even considered, so. Okay, so we'll look this over, and then get with Dan on this.
Send some suggestions.
Yes, yes, please.
I mean, we got plenty of time. It's not like it has to be approved right away. So we just won't take any action on this one, the way that was discussion.
So we can maybe put it on another week, well, when you're back from vacation, you mentioned, or something, to have more discussion.
Okay, then, moving on to, the time is nine fifty-nine. This is a proposed, this is a bid opening hearing.
There's item H.
What?
There's item H.
What is that, strategic? I thought we tabled that for, was that the one we were discussing last week?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Strategic planning and capital. I, I don't know. What is that?
That was the result of, we had a meeting on Thursday, and it ended up being very beneficial for me. The one thing we learned from the department heads is what they would find of great assistance is for us as a board to come up with a strategic plan. Nothing complex, but in particular, strategic plan in regard to our capital improvement projects, I'd say, five years out. What I also learned is that it may help us assist in our bond rating. So I thought that would be very beneficial for the county, especially since we're in the process of finding a new finance director. I'd be willing to spearhead this and communicate with all the board members, just to come up, and, and I like things, and I'm very goal-oriented. I, I like goals, but I also like simplistic, too. I don't like to get into complicated processes. So I would be willing to take the initiative to communicate with my fellow board members, and on a regular basis, come back to the board with strategic planning ideas after I communicate with, especially Rory, who would be instrumental in this process, and other department heads, so that we could identify, because we, there are some projects we know we're going to need to address in the near future. I think one is a boiler at the Sheriff's Department. I mean, that's a, an obvious one. But, but there, there were some capital projects that I wasn't aware of, like a road in Hickory Hills. And once we identify these projects, we as a board can give them, establish a priority with them, either by number, or whether we think it's pertinent, or, or a want or a need, or a wish.
There's a, there's the punchline right there, want, wish, because there's our strategic plan right there, you know, really, our mission statement, what, what direction we're headed. I don't know why these department heads haven't said, you know, we're, they're supervisors here on a daily basis. Why that hasn't been brought to the attention of supervisors before?
Well, I think the one obvious thing is, we've, we've got five different personalities here. And it's difficult for them to communicate with all five of us on a regular basis. I'd be willing to be that diplomat or that ambassador.
I'd be with you.
On this project.
I'll help you with it.
Excellent.
Well, it is information that the whole board might like.
Well, that's the problem. We got so much information that comes in here that only a few people hear about. That's what's got to stop. And everybody needs to hear the information that comes in, not just a couple of people. That's why every meeting I go to, I put my information in that folder. And I don't see any information put in that folder on a lot of meetings that people go to, so we don't know what's going on.
Well, sometimes the, the information from a staff and different ones, though presenting gives us an opportunity, much better than taking a look at minutes, don't you agree? I mean, to actually hear it.
I'd rather hear it from the person themselves. I don't think there's a, a department head or employee out there that's afraid to come and talk to me.
No.
I think one way I might suggest doing it, because I, and I appreciate Dan putting this on the agenda to get the discussion going, is that maybe we would just, instead of there being just one person we really go through, so that, that all the information's coming to all of us at the same time, that we just, and this is mostly dealing with, with capital improvement, because we've got money to decide how to invest and how to use it, and how to use it most responsibly. And maybe we would just put on the calendar a series of, of work sessions with, with each department, so that we go through and we hear from them, like what, what their needs are over the next five years, that we're all hearing at the same time. And then, after that process is done, compare everything that we've heard and decide, you know, what projects, maybe we have the opportunity to move up sooner, and, and what, what's the priority, what's the want, what's the need.
I'd rather see them send us a, a list of things they'd like to see done, you know, that way all, all five of us get dispersed. I had on there last year, working with Rory, that was brought in, and Mr. Delka agreed with me. A couple of other supervisors was dead set against it about a lot of stuff that needs to be done inside the courthouse. If the supervisor would take a walk around this courthouse on a daily basis, they see things that need to be done in here, too. You know, we can't neglect this building. This, this is a beautiful building, just like Pine Chris, the updates we're doing out there. You know, it's, it's, the things we're doing are for a reason. Them doors, if an outside person coming in here, I'm ashamed of the way that, that area looks down in the entry. Them old doors, you got marks all over them. On the first floor, there's about four different types of doors. Now, do you have that in your house? No. You got doors that match. So it should be the same here. This is our house.
I, I think it's a process that we need to walk slowly, and everybody's got some great ideas. Again, for me, the goals are great, and they have that strategic planning and so forth, but again, it's just like those nonprofits. You don't have a vision what those budgets are going to be, and even though you get the money sitting in them pots, and you've got a bad year, you're going to draw money out of there.
Yep.
And the other side, too, is, i- it's good to look ahead on these projects. But again, with the type of money, taxpayers' money, it's hard to say, well, I'm going to replace that roof on the jail in five years because it's new. Well, that may last another five years. And, you know, we're not a corporation. The money comes from one place. I have said for years, the last two or three years, that we're carrying to have a balance. Now, here we are, really carrying it. And it, it all depends on how the, the budget shakes out. I think next year, we're looking at maybe some changes from the state, how we do the budget, plus that commercial taxes hanging out there. So it's good to have these, maybe, these goals and plans. But again, it comes down to the bottom line. When we actually get into the budget session, you know, we, we may not be able to afford anything and have to pull money back in.
Well, many cities and counties, though, do have a five-year strategic plan, but you look at it every year, and some projects do.
I'll do that before I raise taxes, just pull those monies in, because after all, that's where the money come from to begin with. So I think if we walk slowly on this, and, and, you know, instead of rushing into something, I think there's some good thoughts. Everybody's got some good ideas, and we can put something together.
Well, I mean, how do we, because I, I definitely hear what you're, you're saying, and some of the little things we can look at to improve our, our resiliency, our financial resiliency going forward is, you know, we can set up a pool of funds. So we're going to put some money in, in the healthcare fund to, to deal with, okay, so this year, we got hit with a ten percent increase rather than the five percent. And so that's a little pool that we can draw from to help stabilize what the tax rate would be that year to avoid a spike. And so those are, I look at capital improvements, and also those kind of stabilization funds that we can look at, that we're all, kind of balanced each other. But I think we, my goal is that we just, that we get the process started soon, so we kind of pick a date that we're going to start going through these discussions.
Just keep in mind, too, Chris, that we're going to be having a new finance director on board here, probably in a few months. And that person's probably the key person for the whole process. So we want to think about, you know, how much do you want to put until we get somebody in that spot, so.
Well, if we do get someone in that spot, hopefully, but like you said, it doesn't hurt us to start the process. I think, as Craig mentioned, you know, there's a lot of things maybe in this building we should be looking at, but it would help if all of us had the information of what we were looking at, or what Rory's list is, rather than just those that are walking around and looking like he has, and identified some of those. That's just one area to start. The conservation, I know they have some needs, that they talked to some of us, and I think they were intending to get the whole group, but haven't had an opportunity to talk, and that's probably the best way to have them come before us, and all five of us hear the same information and.
But to have these reserves could be a good thing, too, for the mere fact was, a lot of our current bonding was when the interest rates was below a percent. Now, the board's going to be bonding here pretty soon for the bridge, Cedar Opsie Bridge. And you wait, and you see what the percent is, then see what the difference is if that would have been below the percent, and see how much more money it's costing us to bond now. So sometimes it makes, we, back then, it, it made sense to borrow that money. But it might make sense now to be paying for some of that stuff with, you have the potential to do it.
One point, the Cedar Opsie Bridge, we were able to do without bonding this year, because we used the, the two million dollars that was allocated for country view, but not used. And so we were able to avoid the bonding. We'll have, potentially looking at bonding for the Grundy County.
Yeah.
Or, or the Grundy Road paving.
And I don't know, last I heard, it was up close to three percent. I don't know if that's true, but by three percent or less than a percent, big difference. But there's, there's a lot, a lot of factors that comes into play here, and I think those are the things we got to look at and address. And again, I, I think we need to walk a little slowly, and also keep in mind that we have a new finance director. It's going to be coming in here in a few months, and that individual's going to play a key role, because obviously, we're going to take their advice, too, on different things, so.
I work for the board, so some of the directions that we'll be giving them as to what we want them to do. But I think Craig's mentioned a couple of times, some of our projects and things we do is like we kick the can down the road. Well, that's because I think we don't bring it back up. It just kind of hangs out there, and to other priorities kind of get in the way, and maybe it loses time that we shouldn't probably be taking advantage of.
And if we establish a list of these projects, we may have a leg up with our new. And if we establish a list of these projects, we may have a leg up with our new finance director to come in and look at them and provide input that that.
That's why I said, the department heads, you know, this is all news to me. I've never, I've never had a department head come in and say they need, that they don't have something, that they need something.
I think the list is so vast, because it was interesting, at the work session.
Who all was there? And where's the minutes from that meeting that we see?
Dana has them.
But she was gone a couple of days.
But we realized where the county.
So it really wasn't an official meeting?
No, but I meant she was taking notes, there was just two of us.
It was, it was realized that engineering could provide some assistance to conservation with the road, and that was beneficial, and efficiency was realized in the meeting. I think our department heads and our employees just have so much going on, it's difficult to communicate everything. So I feel bad for some of our department heads when, and I'm not a big fan of communicating on email. It's good for retaining information, but I like the face-to-face contact, too.
I like the face-to-face, but if you got it on email, that way, I'm saying, that way, everybody gets it, Dan.
Yes, I agree.
Not this one person, everybody has the information, not just two people, and then they don't tell everybody else what's going on. And then you show up on something, and you don't have any information to go by.
Well, I think the takeaway of the meeting was then, let's get everybody to have the same information, and let's bring that information that they want to share with us to the entire group.
I'm here every day, they can come in and talk to me any day.
Yeah, but that's talking to you, and maybe I'm.
And I share my information.
Well, let's just agree that we're going to work on this together, and, Dan, you said you'd like to lead a little bit of it. Chris says we want everybody, so we'll all pull together and work on this, and then have probably multiple meetings where we'll sit down collectively as a group and start to hammer some of the stuff out, and by the time we get our new person on board, maybe we'll have a lot of that down, that they can review it with the board. It'd be a good work session right away, once we give them time to adjust to it, so.
We'll get the Army and Marines to work together.
Yeah. Well, and maybe if there is some, I don't know that the department heads had had a chance to put all their lists together, they were working on it somewhat, I don't know if it was completed.
I thought that's what, excuse me, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, but maybe if there's some of them that have a completed list or have looked at that, maybe that is something, and we could ask them to present to the board then.
Yeah, well, I thought that's what much it says since we're for, myself.
Well, I'm amazed at how much I forget, even at my age.
But when you said the list could be vastly, I agree with you, but it's not anything close to what we've done in the last 10 years. I mean, just about every building's been touched, and millions of dollars, whether it be roofs, boilers, chillers, roads, it just, it's unbelievable. Sprinkler system in the courthouse, and the work here, and so forth, so.
I would suggest to make sure that we're moving forward on this, that we start the second week of June, inviting the different departments to come in and share with us what their, what their five-year needs are, so that we can start compiling all that information in front of all five of us at the same time.
I like that, I.
Yeah, I think that, and I know there's some vacations to work around, and so it's best to have everybody, like you said, for face-to-face is much better than listening on a telephone, so if that works, I'd like to see us do that as well.
Okay, so we're going to come away with work on this in the future, correct?
Well, someone will put on the agenda, I suppose, again, whatever it would be, in June 14, or something like that.
We'll just ask around the departments and see who's kind of most ready.
Yeah.
And start there first.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? Chris?
No.
Dan? Okay, then, moving on to our public hearing on the proposed janitorial contract. Motion received, placed on file. Do we have a second?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any written comments?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. And Item 3, is bids to be received, open and read. The deadline was 8:30 Tuesday, May 21st, Rory?
Yes.
How many bids did you have?
We received three bids.
And they all came under the timeline, right?
Yes, they did.
And I don't see, I guess it'd be what we're currently paying.
Okay. Okay, again, we did receive three bids. I'm going to open the first one from Marson Building Maintenance.
Rory, do you have what we're monthly paying right now, and annual?
Pardon me?
Do you have what we're currently paying, monthly and annually?
I have, we're currently at $230,000 for an annual.
$230,000?
Yep.
Okay.
And we've been with the existing company, TNC, DBA, I guess, Fresh Start, for the last five years.
Okay.
Okay, first one, Marson, they do have a bid bond. Their total monthly amount is $22,933.78. Their total annual amount, $275,205.30. Again, that's $275,205.30.
Okay.
Second one is from TNC Cleaning, DBA, Fresh Start Cleaning. They do also have a bid bond. Their monthly amount is $19,166.66. Their total annual amount, $230,000. Third one, from Midwest Janitorial Services, their monthly amount.
What was the second one?
Pardon me?
I thought that was the bottom one. TNC. We're doing that one now?
No, we didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not quite in order as your sheets, so the last one I just read was TNC.
Okay.
And then the third one is Midwest Janitorial Services, out of Hiawatha. Their total monthly amount is $24,602.58. Their total annual amount is $295,230.96.
Okay, take a motion to review and place on file.
So moved.
Thank you, board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Rory, we'll see you next week on that one. Okay, 10:18, this is a proposed hearing on FY '19 budget amendment.
Motion received and placed on file, proof of publication.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file.
Second.
Is there any written comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. And we have a resolution at the FY '19 budget, be amended by changing previous revenues and expenditures on file with the county auditor. I believe we went through these numerous times, everybody's had a copy and a chance to address this with Susan. Is there any new questions or anything? Dan?
Anything you want to review, Grant?
I just have the summary that you've all read. I don't know how much of it you want to be repeated for the public.
Whatever you feel comfortable reading.
Yeah.
I can read the whole thing, but that's up to you.
I don't think that's necessary. Can you provide a summary?
Yeah.
A summary?
The summary is, that is the summary.
That's what this is.
Basically, the board, we've worked on, it's been public knowledge now, the different things we've talked about at previous meetings. Does anybody want to go any further with that?
No, it'll be on file.
I'm sure it's on file.
I'll just mention that the overall increasing revenues and expenditures by $119,000, with a net zero impact on general fund reserves.
And that's probably the key part right there.
Yep, that is, yep, thank you.
Motion approved.
Okay.
Second.
And this is a resolution, anybody else? We'll have a roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, Item 11, is any reports or information from the board at this time?
Okay.
Anybody?
We have to do.
You got the second resolution.
I'm sorry, I've been jumping all around here today, trying to get done early, aren't we? Okay, K has a resolution, the county auditor be directed to increase decrease appropriations to the various operating budgets for FY '18, FY '19. This is in accordance with Iowa Code 331.434.6.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, now, is there any reports or information from the board?
Just a couple of things. At our Exchange Club yesterday, we discussed that in 2007, we did a healing field here in Waterloo, and it was really a nice touch for honoring our fallen soldiers from the wars at that time. And we're looking at, Frank and I are looking at doing, along with the help of some other people from Exchange Club and from the Evansdale Land Vets, we had a meeting last night with the, I had a meeting last night with the writers, and they're interested in getting involved in it. Is in November, we're talking about having a healing field at Memorial Hall again this year, and we're looking for people to step forward and get involved. We're looking for big contributors, it's not a cheap project to do, but we'd be honoring about 1,500, over 1,500 soldiers that have died since the Vietnam, including the Korean, Vietnam, Panama, Grenada, Pers and Gulf, and the wars that are still going on today. So there's, it's right now, the council, about a little over 1,500 soldiers, so that'd be 1,500 flags at a cost of, I forget what the total cost is, but we're looking for some big contributors to help defray the cost, and the profits would go to help situations here in Blackout County.
And Frank being?
Frank Magzamin, sorry, yeah. And then, secondly, 51 years ago, probably right about now, I was getting on a bus, over at the Bus D-Bo where the donut shop is now, leaving for basic training, along with 28 other guys, and on this list, I was just noticing, out of the list, about four of them had passed. One of them worked across the street for several years, Tom Bonifus was with the agency across the street, so a lot of names, and it's interesting, looking back 51 years and remembering some of those guys, some of them I didn't even realize they were on the bus with me.
Okay, anybody else? And then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.